All right. Yeah, there we go.
Good.
Yep.
All right. Before I open the city council meeting, I need to close the workshop. Close the workshop at 6:00 P.M. We have nothing to report from the executive session. And now I will open up a city council meeting, August 27, 2024. We're going to please rise for a pledge and an invocation, invocation and a pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for many blessings that we have, this great community, and the greatest state in the Union. And thank you for the forefathers of Kerrville, both in the public sector and the private sector, that made this community the desirable place that it is today. Guide us in our deliberations this evening. Bless the employees of the city and our military stationed around the world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unusual event in that Stuart does not have any announcements of community interest tonight.
What?
But Jeff Harris does. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to talk about one because I know that they're probably going to speak about it in public forum here in a little bit. But we have a few things coming up in the community that are veteran-based. One is the second annual Fields of Honor put on by Gunny's Warriors. I'm going to let the Pericini's speak to theirs. One of the greatest things that we have in our community are our veterans. We have two Veteran Service Officers that work for our veterans here in town. And on the 5th of September, from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. at the Kerr County Ag Barn or Hill Country Youth Event Center, there's a Veterans Benefit Program that's going on all day. They're going to have over 60 vendors out that are going to speak to our veterans that can help them, direct them, and take them places that they need to go. Gary, I'm sure you're probably going to speak on this maybe as well. Gary Knoller is on the Veteran Service Advisory Council for the county. And Jenna Sanchez and Chase Alphsip put this together. Same timeframe, there's an event that happened on 9/11/2001, and it's starting to fade. And it's sad because that was 9/11. Well, there's a walk to remember on 9/11, starting at the Beer Garden at Shriner University. It's going to be at 5:00. It's put together by together with Hill Country Veterans. General Mike Oats is the one that came up with this. You're going to meet at the Beer Garden. There's going to be some stuff, a few things said. The former First Dude is going to play taps on the trumpet. We got him to come out of retirement. And you'll walk 1.7 miles if you so choose to do. There will be pictures of our heroes that we lost since 9/11 and some local heroes that we lost from Kerrville that'll be out there. And when you get through with the walk, then you come back and tell some war stories and have a drink of your choice at the Trailhead Beer Garden. But if y'all can, please, Mr. Amstoy, I know you've been pushing this hard on the lead, and thank you for that. So that's it.
Can I have a copy of that, please?
You should have one.
I don't.
Here you go.
If not, I've got plenty. So thank you. And that's it, sir. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else have an announcement of community interest?
I'm good.
Good. All right. The next item will be a presentation. Chief McCall.
Council Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of our officers tonight. We have Stacy Escavell from Mothers Against Drunk Driving with us tonight. They recently did their annual awards, and several of our officers earned awards from their organization. And she's here tonight to present those awards to our officers.
It's a little high. Sorry. My name is Stacy Escavell, and I am the South Texas Program Specialist for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. I'm honored tonight to recognize the Kerrville law enforcement officers who've gone above and beyond the call of duty to stop impaired driving. These awards are a way for us to show that we are grateful for the tireless efforts put forth every day in the community to keep our streets safe. Our first award tonight is for our distinguished enforcement hero. Now, this award is given to the officer who's established the most DWI arrests in their department. Officer Cole Daggett generated the most DWI arrests in 2023 with 42 total.
Stand up here, and they're going to take a picture in just a second.
Okay.
Our next award tonight is for outstanding service. This is given to the individual who's made a difference in the last year by going above and beyond in leadership prevention or enforcement. The next award goes to FTO Tyler Cottonware. He generated 21 DWI arrests in 2023. He had an officer in training for much of the year and has received the Distinguished Enforcement Hero Award for the previous three years. Next, also for outstanding service is Officer John Luis Rodriguez. Officer Rodriguez has 17 DWI arrests in 2023. Also for outstanding service, we have Officer Andrew Sandoval. Officer Sandoval also had 17 DWI arrests in 2023. For outstanding service, we also have Officer Ryan Casey. Officer Casey had 15 DWI arrests in 2023. Our final award tonight is for Outstanding Rookie. This award is given to the rookie who has made, I'm sorry.
One more.
I'm so sorry.
Andrew Gilliam.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I apologize. It's right here. For outstanding service, we have Officer Andrew Gilliam. Officer Gilliam, I'm sorry. You had 16 DWI arrests for 2023. Okay, now, I'm so sorry. Your anticipation is right above here, right? I get it. I get it. Our final award tonight is for Outstanding Rookie. This award is given to the rookie who has made a difference in the last year by going above and beyond in prevention or enforcement. Officer Brianna Henson has evolved into a proactive officer and has focused a great deal of effort into DWI enforcement in just a short period of time. Officer Brianna Henson receives the Outstanding Rookie Award for 2023. Congratulations. I want to thank you all for allowing me to recognize these officers who keep our community and our roadway safe. I also want to thank the chief as well as Lieutenant Morris for allowing me to get this together by communicating and presenting these nominations. All of our officers and all of our law enforcement are greatly appreciated. So thank you so much, and you guys stay safe.
Can I move a little bit?
I can stand right here. It's too short. Perhaps I should stand over there.
Now we got to go this way. Now you're good, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you, sir.
You guys get traded. Thank you.
Please.
Hold on.
On behalf of the council, I want to say a personal thank you to each of the officers
who were recognized this evening and those family members that came tonight. Thank you for all you do for our community, keeping us safe. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. All right. Our next section is the Visitor Citizens Forum. I want to remind people that the Visitor Citizens Forum is largely for discussing items that are city business. However, we're happy to hear from anyone. We do have a long agenda, and each person only has, what's the time limit now? Four? Three? Four?
Unless you...
Four is fine. If you go over four, I'll kind of warn you ahead of time, and if you keep going, I'll ask you to leave. Who's our first speaker?
Brock.
Come up to the microphone and state your name and address if you want.
My birth name, Richard John Comyscrew, Divine Nature, Rock Jesus Christ. I'm running for president, Rock Republican. It's on YouTube. Rock, the name Rock means a lot. It means reaching our Catholic kids, R-O-C-K. And it's on YouTube, Rock the Vote. Now, I want to go a little quick history of the laws in America and the Constitution made by the French a long time ago, over 200 years ago, made to fail, and it's a total failure. I was raised in France from '77 to '87, 10 years. And from that education, I came to the States at 17 and started working right away in Houston and did well for 10 years there. I worked other places and brought to Kerrville in 2006. My point, the only way to fix America, Trump don't know, Biden don't know, Barack Obama don't know, Harris don't know, the laws in France, that's why the Statue of Liberty was given by the French for America, same technology as the Eiffel Tower. And that's why the Olympics were in Paris. They knew this was going to come, happen. So I got a lot of material to tell you and a lot of things to cover. I'll kind of make it simple. My point with the education in school in America like France, the same scholastic format in the school in America like France, that's the whole plan, to make America the superpower of the world. I got a 10-year plan to make America the superpower of the world, focus on education, all sorts of education. And for the kids, in 10 years, trilingual like I was in France, French, English, Spanish, World Intelligence. The educational system on purpose was made by the French over 200 years ago, made to fail. It's a total failure. So they knew that somebody from France would come fix it. Now, Trump don't know, Biden don't know, Harris don't know, Barack Obama don't know. It's only America for America. To fix it, somebody from France, like where I was, that's why I was raised there, from '77 to '87. I was born in Houston, but raised in France on purpose to get that education. And then 10 years, after 10 years I was there, at 17, I got a breakdancing job in Paris on TV, made $1,000, and I came to America with that $1,000, started working at the Club Bilbera, Mel's, a strip club, where I made the name Rock Famous for 10 years. I had a great time, great, great time. I knew everybody, Amber N. Holyfield, that's a Sue Smith, what's your millionaire, old people, real famous, the name Rock Famous there. So I always knew who I was from an early age. So my mother often named me John, well, I'm making something a little harder, Rock better. So my Holy Spirit guided me all sorts of ways my whole life. So Rock the Vote is on YouTube. It's a 1990 campaign. Now, I got a lot of things to tell you, so that's why I need time. My Holy Spirit guided me in all sorts of things, but I need more time, and I wish we had more time than twice a month. But so...
We also have time limitation tonight. You only have about 20 seconds left. Do you want to wrap up?
That's it.
That's it. You want to wrap up?
Now, look, now, look, I'll make things simple. Just Rock the Vote, I can take care of this all by myself. Now, if you want to know who I am, in the Bible, it's 1 Corinthians 10, verse 3 through 4, and they all eat the same special food and drink the same special drink, for they drink from that spiritual rock that accompany them, and company them, in that Rock Jesus Christ. I'm the second Jesus, black Mexican, Indian Jesus. Now, there's a lot to be said. So just Rock the Vote, I'll talk to you later. A lot of things, more things to say.
I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You bet. All right. Who's next?
Mike and Jan Parisini.
Good. Thank you for coming. It's getting close.
Yes, it is. September 7th through the 11th is the Second Annual Kerrville Field of Honor. And we would just, this will be our last time here to talk about it. And so I just wanted to remind everybody to come out, see the flags. We have 500 American flags, just like this one, flying in perfect rows, and at night they're illuminated. And if you want to see something that's pretty amazing, come out and visit them at night. This event, which runs from September 7th through the 11th, is free to the public and open 24 hours a day. Our schedule is September 7th is a Saturday. The field opens to the public at 8:00 a.m. We will have the opening ceremony at 11:00 a.m. We will have three guest speakers, and they will be speaking about, the theme is honor your hero. So they will be speaking of their own personal hero. And then we'll have food trucks and music and kids' activities, a bounce house, face painting. We'll have several nonprofits and vendors there on Saturday. The rest of the days are for reflection in the, in the flags. Come out, reflect in the flags, spend some time there, read the dedications. So if you choose, people are welcome to purchase this flag, which is made in Sandy, Utah, for $45, and it will fly in honor of your own personal hero for the whole event. And then you will receive all that you see here and the dedication card at the end of the event. And people like to come out and read the dedications on the flags. As of today, we have sold more flags than we did for all of last year's event. So I'm hoping that more orders will come in, and people are welcome, there'll be a table to purchase a flag during the event. And then on September 11th, as Mr. Harris talked about how important that day is, the local Post 1480, VFW, will be holding a ceremony at 8:45 in the morning. That coincides with the Twin Towers in New York City. And then every evening at sunset, Mr. George Eichner will be playing taps over the flags. So I'm inviting, we're inviting everyone to come out and see this event, and it's Gunny's Warriors' way of thanking the community for supporting us and being so welcoming. So this is our gift to the community, and we hope you all enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can you, you go here on the QR code to order your flags, correct?
Yes, sir.
Or you said you can buy them at the, at the event itself?
Yes, sir. There'll be a table to...
I just want to make sure we get all the flags we can for you.
Yes, thank you.
And I need, I need to do it. I haven't done it yet. So...
There's also a website, and you can always just call us, the number's on here, if you have any questions about ordering a flag. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gary Knoller.
Evening. My name's Gary Knoller. I've been a resident of Kerrville and Kerr County for about 22 years, and currently serve as Chairman of the Kerr County Veteran Service Advisory Committee, which Mr. Harris is also on that committee with three others. And our duties are to advise the county commissioners and the Veterans County Service Officer as to anything that we may be able to do to help them along with veterans' activities. And we didn't, used to always have a Veteran Service Officer in Kerr County. This didn't come out until about 10 years ago when Judge Tinley was the judge and accepted the fact that it needed to be done, and they helped convince the other commissioners to do it. And so we had a service officer come aboard, and then we had one and a half service officers come aboard, and now we got two. And so we have Jenna Sanchez and Chase Alphsip. And one of the things that we, we always had in our vision was, at some point in time, the service officer would be able to do a Veterans Benefit Fair. And so Jenna's put one together. It's the biggest one that's ever hit Kerrville. She's now up to about 75 tables. The biggest one I ever know of from about 10 years ago was 40 tables. About 20 or 25 of those tables are taken up by the VA themselves, as well as the Texas Veterans Commission, Texas Veterans Land Board, and a whole host of locals, nonprofits. And the importance of doing this is, is to help veterans have a source where they can go to and get firsthand information, because veterans always hear about stuff. And it may be good information, or it may not be good information. And so here, you don't, you don't have to take secondhand information. You can go directly to either the VA or the Texas Veterans Land Board or Texas Veterans Commission or your county service officers and get the information you need. When I run into a veteran, I typically do about a 30-second to 60-second assessment of them, and I can pretty well tell that this person either really knows a lot about their veterans, or they don't know. Now, some of them, they don't even know if they're a veteran or not. They think you have to be wounded in battle somewhere, otherwise you're not a veteran. Well, that's not so. And so they earn benefits through honorable service. We want all veterans to obtain those benefits, and many veterans need it. So this is a place for them to go. It's going to be held on September 5th, which is a Thursday, which is nine days, starts at 10:00. Be wrapping up by 3:00. There's going to be door prizes. There's going to be some free food, as well as some food you can purchase. Plenty of people to talk to. You're all certainly invited to come. Hope you can come out, spend a short time. You don't have to be a veteran to come. We're not going to be looking to see if you got any old dog tags on you anywhere. So consider to come out and let other people know, we'd be glad to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
All right. Next.
That's the end of the citizen speaker, sir.
Thank you. We come to the consent agenda. These are considered routine and can be approved in one motion. However, any item can be removed by a member of the council. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
So 4B.
Right? Needs, 4B needs to remove. Anything else? All right. Because some of these are ordinances, we will have to read them in, correct? Shall we?
Yes, sir.
All right. So before we vote on the consent, do we have anybody to speak on any item?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you care to read in the ordinances for us?
Yes, sir. 4A, ordinance number 2024-19, second reading, an ordinance creating a planned development district zoning to authorize medium-density residential district uses and short-term rental units consisting of Comanche Trace Phase 13, Block D, lots 1 through 6, and more commonly known as 3001, 3003, 3005, 3007, 3009, and 3011, Clubhouse Road and Comanche Trace Phase 18, lots 7 through 28, and more commonly known as 4528, Comanche Trace Drive, Unit 7 through 28, adopting a concept plan and conditions and providing other matters relating to the subject. The ordinance passed first reading unanimously. Would you like me to go ahead and read in 4B at this time?
That'd be fine. Please.
4B, ordinance number 2024-20, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinances number 2019-14 and 2021-25, which created and then amended a planned development district on an approximate 58.74 acre tract of land out of the Joseph S. Anderson Survey Number 141, Abstract Number 2, and J.S. Sater Survey Number 142, Abstract Number 290, generally located north of and in the 1,000 to 1,200 block of Thompson Drive, Spur 98. This amendment to revise the previously adopted land use table, providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance passed unanimously on first reading. 4C, ordinance number 2024-22, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4, Boards and Commissions, Section 2-91, Senior Service Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by revising the meeting schedule and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance passed unanimously on first reading. 4C, ordinance number 2024-22, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4, Boards and Commissions, Section 2-91, Senior Service Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by revising the meeting schedule and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance passed unanimously on first reading, and the consent agenda is now ready for adoption, except for item 4B. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 4A, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, 4G, and 4H.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion made by Ms. Hughes, second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote unanimously. Now to 4B, which has been pulled. Mr. Paxton.
Do you have a quick update for 4B? Get the PowerPoint up real quick. Here's the concept plan that you saw upon first reading, and this is the land use table that was presented. As you can see, Lot 11R and, excuse me, 10R and 11R have changed to include C3 and R3 for townhomes. And that is consistent with the concept plan, but it was left off of that land use table. And that is the only update.
No other updates, no other changes.
That is correct.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Any questions for, I believe, Representative for McDonald Company is here? Any questions for Miss McDonald Company? All right. Do we have a motion on 4B?
I'll move to approve item 4B, second reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. All right. 5A, resolution providing for the city's approval or disapproval of the Kerr Central Appraisal District's fiscal year. Ms. Barron.
I'm going to let Sharon with Kirk Had speak to you for a moment, but you had the budget in your packet for your review, and so this is just a request for approval or rejection of their budget. And I'm not sure if you know how the Kirk Had budget works, but all taxing entities vote on that, and so it's either an approval or rejection by all. So to change it, everyone has to be in that same, in the same vote.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what it has to be. Sorry. I'll give it to Sharon, and she can talk you through the big things. But...
I hope you're all having a great evening. My total budget is 5.27 of an increase. I've got salary increases in there, and then I've also got in some increases due to expenses going up and a new requirement by the state that we do a homestead audit every year. So you have any questions about any of the line items?
I do. I just have one.
Sure.
On your list for salaries?
Yes.
You have an exemption clerk on the top, in the top section?
Yes.
And then in the bottom section, you have an exempt specialist, I guess? That's a...
Oh, that was, that was an error on my part. It's, it's the same position.
Okay. All right.
I hadn't even caught that. Nobody else had either.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? That certainly entertain a motion, then.
I move we approve the budget of the...
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve Resolution Number 36-2024. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 5B, opposed amendment to ordinance number 2024-10, and I believe...
Mayor, if, if so, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the September 10th meeting.
Yes.
Is there a second? Motion's been made to table until September 10th, this action. Any comment? This action, any comment? All in favor, so vote. Pass unanimously.
We do have one citizen speaker signed up. Okay. You're going to pass? Okay.
All right. Sorry about that, I didn't ask, I forgot. All right, five B is tabled. Five C, designation of rights and artwork murals. I believe we're going to ask Ms. Boyle to start this.
Good evening again, mayor and council. As we mentioned in your workshop earlier, the work, the contracts before you this evening are for the murals that we presented at your workshop. And for just the sake of the audience, we're going to run through that presentation very briefly. I'm going to ask Ms. Boyle to come to the podium and then we will ask you to consider and approve the agreements.
Because we've thought of some new questions for her.
Good evening, council. Thank you again. So to quickly run through this, this is a Curville twenty fifty priority item P six point seven to encourage an art program or other enhancements for the walls under the Sydney Baker Bridge. And a brief overview of the public art process is outlined, starting with the selection of the site and in the fall of twenty twenty-three, moving through the Citizen Art Panel process, the Curville Convention Visitors Bureau and the text audit agreement supplements with the target date installation for October twenty twenty-four. This is a large-scale view of the murals and where they would be located as selected by the Citizen Art Panel. And again, the close-up versions of each of the murals as approved by the text audit supplemental and the Citizen Art Panel, as well as the Curville Convention Visitors Bureau Board. And the.
Dr. Ashley?
All right, we will turn it back over to you for consideration. We recommend approving the agreements that were in your packet. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for either of the ladies?
The artist is from Austin, is that who you selected?
The Citizen Art Panel selected, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Texas artist.
All right, so they are asking for us to approve these agreements. Is there a motion to that effect?
A move to approve the agreements.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's many seconds.
Many seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your hard work on this and we look forward to seeing them.
Ashley.
We're just seeing them. I have six A. Have I made it six A yet? Financial report, Ms. Behrens. Is not here. He's skedaddled. There she is.
Y'all are going way faster than me.
Financial report, ma'am.
Man, you're going and moving today.
Every time.
Okay, all right, chief.
I've got a record to break, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to work on that. Well, I'm going to keep it short. As we're getting close to the end of the year, we'll start giving you some estimates, probably this time next month, so y'all start seeing what it's going to look like. Just keep in mind that really through the middle of October, we're still paying bills. And so there's a lot of unknowns until that point, but we try to do the best we can at estimating. On the general fund side, we're better than budget right now. Revenues about hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars better than budget. And we'll talk a little bit through a couple of those as we go into the next few slides. Personnel, you can see, is better than budget, but we're still having staff shortage things. But remember, there's a lot of factors in there. So training is in there, health insurance is in there. So personnel encompasses several things. So expense is better than budget, but I can tell you, we've paid several streets invoices in August. So you're going to see that, that five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is going to be a lot smaller when I bring that back to you next month. Sales tax, as you know, we changed our projection for fiscal year twenty-five to three percent less than fiscal year twenty-four, just based on some trends. And you can see that year over year, you can see the green now is just starting to drop below fiscal year twenty-four, which is kind of what, twenty-three, which is what we've been seeing. And then the history, even though when you look at the monthly trends, sales tax kind of happens in the same wave and pattern unless there was kind of an outlier or someone paid early or someone paid late, something big outstanding. The trend lines are the same pretty much month over month, so that's good. It means we can track it once we kind of start really getting a feel for what's the rolling average look like. So we're bringing that down, but we're really watching that and being conservative on it. We've had a lot of late pays and early pays. So month over month is not really an easy way for us to track it. So we like to look at it year to date. Water fund, I'd rather someone else have to tell you all this, but. So water sales by themselves are eleven percent behind where we expected to be at this point in the year. We should actually be ahead of last year by about six percent and we're actually seven percent behind. So, you know, that shows two things. First of all, you're, we're asking people to conserve and they're doing that. So, but it also kind of goes in hand with what we've talked about with the stability of our, of our rate structure. So we're doing some more work on that and plan on bringing you some ideas in the spring as far as just water modeling and what does that look like in actual costs and those things. So we'll be bringing you a lot more than that, early spring. Sewer is ahead of budget estimate barely, but that's good. So it's tracking kind of where we expected it to be, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars ahead of last year. But again, once we make those changes to the residential sewer accounts, then that's a stable revenue source. Reuse, better than budget, we've been seeing that the last few years. People are hauling a lot more reuse water from the plant. And then you can see the expenses down there. Personnel, better than budget, but they're still having some staff shortages over there, too. Supplies are better than budget right now. And then maintenance is better than budget. And when you look at this year to last year, on the maintenance, you have the two hundred and sixty-five thousand more this year than last year. That's because we had the, we bought four of those GAC filters last year and so they hit in, in one fiscal year because of the supply chain, the way it was. So that's a little bit skewed number there, but that's what that's for. So other than that, I mean, expenses are tracking, you know, better than budget. We'll see how that, you know, works as we progress through the year. Departments are holding where they can, but again, there's not a lot of fluff in the water fund. So, but they are holding on anything they can hold to kind of overcome some of those shortfalls. This I wanted to show you, even though this is through August and not just July, we went, we had already billed for the month of August when I was doing this report. And so I thought it would be good to show you what water sales looked like in the last couple of years. So you can see water sales there on top for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and that's through August of each of those years. So you can see a pretty big hit there in twenty-four, which for all the reasons we've talked about. And then you can see sewer on the right. And so very stable, it's growing with our rate increases and growing with commercial consumption. So that's kind of doing what we expected for it to do. Development services still running behind budget, although they do have some projects going on now. But again, that could be, you know, one good year, one year's not super good and one year is really good. It's just really hard to tell what development's going to bring unless we have some knowns. But remember, it is part of the general fund. We just show it like this for transparency purposes, for budgeting, but it comes back together with the general fund at year end. Occupancy tax, overall, two hundred and seven thousand better than budget estimate, but primarily because of the Eclipse donations and merchandise that we sold. We budgeted those things very conservatively because we really didn't know what to expect. And then interest revenue, of course, is doing better than budget. But you can see on the tax side, we're running a little bit behind budget. We kind of, again, attribute that to kind of a partner with sales tax. So, you know, when sales tax is on the down, typically hot is too. But we're watching that and I know CVB's been reaching out and doing some different things. And then also, if you've been watching the parks advertisement, they've been doing a lot of specials and things like that to try to draw some people over to KSB as well.
Can I ask about this slide? Expenses, it says expenses, two hundred and sixty-nine million better than budget?
Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we use the K sometimes and the M sometimes?
Oh, you know what? Okay, hold on a minute. No, I know this one is Eclipse-related. No, you're, no, I do use the K and an N. No, if you're looking at budget estimate, we should be at two point four million. And over on the right, we're better than budget by two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Thousand, thank you.
Yes.
I was clarifying that little box too.
Yep. Okay, yep, no, that's just a typo. You are correct.
Typos are fine.
Oh, no, that doesn't include the one million dollar commitment. So when we're better than, when we're, our budget estimate includes that. Because we know we're not going to spend that million dollars this year. That's what that is. I just didn't clarify the comment. Good question.
Please continue, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good. And then just coming up, letting you know, public hearing in the first reading of the proposed budget and tax rate is on September tenth. And then the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, we'll have auditors on site. And September thirtieth, we'll start wrapping up through the month, really, of November. In the meantime, we'll start twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Any questions for Ms. Behrens? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Here to the board appointments. Mr. Harris, do you think we can talk about this here or do we need to go to executive session on building board of adjustment appeals?
I am pretty sure we can discuss it here. I talked to Councilmember Seigerman about this in her absence. And I was successful in reaching three of the four applicants for the BBAA. Jennifer Hyde, and she said that she would graciously accept reappointment. We talked about that. Wayne Ecker has been an alternate. And Wayne and I discussed moving him from an alternate position to a full-time member of the BBAA. Crystal Smith is a new applicant. I know that she had applied for a couple of other positions. She said, I applied for what I could because I want to serve. And she goes, I would like to serve on BBAA if possible. So I would like to recommend her to be one of our alternates. I was not successful in reaching Mr. Reeves. He, I couldn't talk to him, he didn't call me back. So I don't want to take any action on Mr. Reeves without speaking to him. But what I would like to do is appoint, reappoint Jennifer as a full-time BBAA and move Wayne from an alternate to a permanent. Then nominate Crystal Smith as leading one.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you.
Question's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. All right, good. The other appointment is our Main Street Advisory Board. The interview team was myself and Ms. Seigerman. We have two applications and two vacancies, so it might behoove us to choose those two. No, they're excellent applicants. So I would make a motion that we appoint Debbie Lear and Lonza Teague to the Main Street Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Question's been made in seconded. Any discussion? No, all in favor, so vote. And they are appointed. Does anyone have any items for future agendas?
Yes, sir. No.
That's it? All right. Hearing none at six forty-two. I adjourn this meeting.